I call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. This is the January 3rd, 2017 meeting of the Wintering Town Council. Would everybody rise in allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do you want to check your roll call?
Yes. Council Engman, here. Council Calla, present. Council Sanford, here. Council Boncorry, here. Council Verone, present. Council Boyagen, present. Council Delvanto, here. And President Luteri, President Driscoll, here.
Thank you.
So let's adopt the minutes from the December 20th. I have a couple of...
I'm sure there are a couple.
Well, on page three of the Under New Business says, "Motion by Vice President Luteri to refer to Finance Committee." It's not a reference to what it is. So I thought we should put in there that it was for the new voting machine motion.
Page three. Okay. There you go.
Yeah, so we should just make sure that's in there for in case anyone's researching this later.
I just wanted to check if you were reading or not.
Okay. So I would just amend the minutes that we've received. I'll take a motion to amend.
Motion to approve the minutes as amended.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
I'd like to recuse myself from that vote. I was not present. Thank you.
All those in favor, aye. All those. Okay. Next item of business is, beginning of each year, the council votes for a vice president. Jim Luteri has served that position ad nauseam over the last year, and I would... We need to now have a motion from somebody to appoint somebody to be the vice president.
So can I make that motion?
You may make that motion.
All right. That we appoint Russ Sanford as our vice president for 2017.
I'll second the nomination of Russ.
The nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. It's been seconded. Motion seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of Russ Sanford as the vice president of the council, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Do I abstain?
No.
Good.
Every vote counts.
Yeah, I'll move next to the bar. I'm gonna mislend it up.
I'm moving between both.
You're lucky, guys.
It's an official thing.
Nice.
It's transition power, is that what they call it?
Had a smooth transition.
Smooth transition.
And if I could, I just want to say thank you to all the council and their confidence in me, and I was fortunate enough to be the first vice president when we first started with Mr. Riley, and I thank you for this honor.
Thank you. You work hard, Mr. Sanford.
I'll be right to your left.
Okay. The next item of business is, we need to have a public hearing. We're going to have a public hearing, an open hearing, and this is to establish a revolving account for purposes of running and managing the asset property on Pauline Street. I'll read the full motion when we get to that under Old Business, but that's basically what it is. And I don't know if there's any public comment. Any comment from the council?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee has met on this and has recommended a favorable action.
Okay. Any other comments? Then I'm gonna close that public hearing. Public comment?
Council President, I'd just like to mention something in the public comment.
Okay.
Real brief. I just want to say that I... Last week, it was Thursday or Friday, I left my house pretty early, four o'clock in the morning, and we had a little snow event, and I was very pleased to see that all the streets were salted, and you know, the DPW was out there earlier than I was, and I went out at four. Everything was done. I happened to see a police car drive by, and it just makes you appreciate the hard work of the men and women who work for the town, and that we are truly lucky that everything is firing on all cylinders around here, and I really appreciate the effort that goes into running the police department, the fire department, and the DPW, as well as town hall. And I was really, really happy to see that.
Good. Thank you. Okay. Under Correspondence, I have no correspondence to report. I don't know if anybody else, any other councils have any? None? Committee reports, Finance Committee, Council Delvanto, we had a meeting.
The Finance Committee met earlier today, and we had two items, the Pauline Street account, and the other was the voting machines, and we recommended favorable action on both items.
Good. Thank you. Next section, Town Managers' Report. No report. Jim McKenna's not here tonight.
Jim is away. Everything went smoothly through Christmas and New Year, so not the point.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, good job.
Good job.
Make everybody else.
That's a good report.
That's right.
Good. Under School Department update, there has been no school committee meeting since our last meeting, so I have no update for that. So let's move to Old Business. First item on here is establishing a revolving account, as we just mentioned in the public hearing section, and I'll just read this whole motion. "To move that the Town Council vote to pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, in accordance with the Charter of the Town of Wintering, I move the Town Council vote to authorize the revolving fund entitled Pauline Street. Said account will be funded by miscellaneous receipts and rents collected by the Town Manager's office and be used to offset the expenditures associated with the rental of the property. The limit on the total amount which may be expended from this fund is set at $75,000. Additionally, any balance remaining at the end of the fiscal year 2017 will remain with said fund or to take any other action thereto." So that is the motion. Is there any... It came out of committee, so I'll require a second. Is there any discussion of that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Unanimous? The next two, the Wintering School gym fees and the At-Risk Advisory Council Committee, rather, they've both been referred to committee, and we need to hear back from the committees.
Yeah, it was... I don't think Jim has been able to meet yet, so but we... I think by the next one, we should hear. So let's defer that.
Okay. We'll continue that. And with the gym fees also, that was referred to the Finance Committee.
Yes, the Finance Committee has tabled that item in committee, and the...
We need to clarify.
They're working on a long-term plan.
Yeah.
Until that... We have a temporary fee in place that's covering the expenses, and once we get a long-term plan, we'll be able to establish some fees.
Okay, so we'll keep that on the agenda, but continue until that process is completed.
Sure.
Okay. The next item under Old Business, this is the motion to fund the purchase of eight new voting machines. Does this need to go to a public hearing? So we need to, before we vote on this, we need to post this, and we can have a public hearing at the next meeting in January, and then we can take a vote on it at that time.
Right.
Yes, I will report that the Finance Committee has already met on this item and has recommended a favorable action.
Okay.
So we don't have to do it again.
Okay, good. So we'll have the public hearing at the next meeting if you post that.
Yep.
Good. The next item is the Town Council vote to move polling stations. We talked about last time having a public hearing on that, but I think we determined that there was no need for that, and so I think we can vote on that tonight. And so I gotta find that here. I'll find it. I'm gonna read the motion. Okay, so this is the motion, that the Town Council vote to move polling station, excuse me, polling locations in Precinct 1, Precincts 1, 3, and 6 to the Wintering Middle School at 400 Main Street, and move Precincts 2 and 5 to the Art of T. Cummings School at 40 Herman Street, and make no change to Precinct 4, which will remain at Golden Drive, or take any other action thereto. So that's the motion. Before us, it'll come out of committee, so we need a second on that. Or motion and a second. Motion.
Motion, yeah.
Motion and a second.
A second.
Is there any conversation? Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Now, we're under New Business, and...
Well, just under Old Business, I wanna bring up the issue. At our last meeting, on the agenda was a golf club lease, which we had already voted for the Town Manager to enter into a 20-year lease to the golf course. The lease came in at the last meeting, and there were two or three councils that wanted to read it before voting on it again, and I don't know if they have read it or if they have commented. It seems to have been left off the agenda, but I don't know that we have to have it on the agenda, since it was on the agenda and put over to this meeting. And if I don't know, will you take a vote on it?
I mean, it's... The fact that it's not on the agenda, does that preclude us from taking a vote on it? Because otherwise, I'd be ready to do that. I think one of the reasons it's not here is that just that Mr. McKenna is out of town and not here for this meeting, and there's anything more to talk about with him, but is there... Could we waive a rule to have something on the agenda and wanted to vote for it?
I don't think we have to waive a rule to do that. I think we can just vote on it. I mean, it was put over only for the situation that there were a couple of people that wanted to read the act, but they hadn't read it yet, but we had got it a couple of days ago. But our initial vote was to authorize the lease, and...
I think the first vote was that we authorize him to negotiate the lease and to include more than whatever the 10-year limit that had existed for him, and we approved that. And he was coming back, I think, looking for approval to...
For directions.
To sign this case, now that we have the lease. So, I mean, are we ready to take a vote and give him that authorization?
I would move that we direct the Town Manager to sign the lease that he has presented to us.
Let's...
I'll second it.
Make motion? It's been seconded? Is there any discussion?
Discussion? I am not prepared to comment on that lease, since it wasn't on the agenda, and I do think it would make sense for the Town to have the manager here as well for that discussion since he's said he wants to negotiate a lease.
Okay. I don't know if they're a little...
Are you making a motion to table it?
Do you want to make a motion to...
I'll make a... Yeah, I'll exercise my right to table it.
Motion to table it?
Sure.
Sure.
That's seconded?
Counsel privilege.
Counsel privilege, then.
No, see, your counsel privilege is only the first time it comes on the agenda.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to have actual motion to table it. The counsel privilege is for the first time, so it's on the agenda.
But it's not on the agenda, so...
It's not on the agenda, so we have a motion to table it. We have a second.
I'll second.
And where are we at now? So we have a motion, we have two motions on the table right now. One motion is to approve it, it's been seconded. Why don't we vote on that, and then we'll vote on the question of tabling it?
I think we have to do that.
Yeah, I think you have to vote on the motion to table.
Yeah, okay, right. Yeah, so let's do that. So we've got a motion to table the vote on approving the golf course lease, or rather, giving Jim McKenna, the Town Manager, the authority to sign that lease. And so we have that motion, it's been seconded. Discussion?
I just would like to make sure that it's tabled until a date certain next meeting, just that we don't put it on.
No, I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
So we'll assume that that is the motion, is to table it till the next meeting.
Yes, I'll amend my motion to table it until the next meeting.
And put it on the agenda?
Put it on the agenda.
Make sure it's on the agenda.
All right, so that's the motion, been seconded. Any further discussion?
And just to give some, you know, some background, I think we're all in favor of this going forward, so I don't want to put anybody on the fence here, just a matter of making sure we're clear with the Town Manager, and then we can vote it at that point in time, so I don't think there's any issues regarding the negotiation or the lease.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and also, we already have a lease, and this lease will not take effect until April 1st of 2017, so I think...
I don't think we're in a rush.
We're not in a rush, there's not, I don't think there's any downside in terms of approving it two weeks from now, so... So all those in favor of tabling this till the next meeting in January, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we'll table it till the next meeting. The second motion, still on the table, withdrawn.
No, it's tabled.
Yeah. Good. Thank you. We're under New Business now, so this is a motion put forth by our CFO, Mike Perez. It is a motion to establish a capital project fund for the purpose of completing a software upgrade to the town and schools. It is expected that this project will involve three phases, and this motion is designed to cover the costs associated with the first two phases. There's a discussion about funding sources in the motion that's been presented, and so I think that this is a motion that needs to be referred to the Finance Committee.
So if I may, first, just a small correction on it. In the text of the motion, it does not mention taking $57,843 from the bond premiums, which the motion should be amended to have. That is listed in the proposal, but it was on a second page of that that was left off through an error on my part, so that's a small thing.
Mr. President?
Yes?
We can add in committee, so just if you want to know, we have a committee hearing. The language that we'd like to say.
Perfect.
So I think this definitely needs to be referred to. The Finance Committee needs to analyze it, and probably some more information about exactly what involves it. It's more of a... It's not an upgrade, it's a change, right?
It would be a change in that we are not going, we are not sticking with our current vendor. We've identified another vendor, which is the old vendor that was switched from, but the reasons of the switch were based on cost, and now the cost is comparable, and I think the quality that we get with the other vendor is far superior to what we have now. And really, most of the financial things, we can't get a lot of the information that we need easily, and so there are a lot of inefficiencies built into how this system was constructed, so we just don't, we don't have the flexibility we need, and redesigning the system would give us a lot of leeway to fix processes, and it would also, this would be for financials, so for all accounts payable, accounts receivable, utility billing, tax billing, motor vehicle excise, as well as payroll, human resources, and the very important component would be inspectional services. Getting a software package for them for building permits, so that people could apply for building permits online. The permit review process would be automated, not that, no, there wouldn't be someone reviewing it. People would be reviewing it, but instead of physically taking plans from one person to the next, it would be electronic. So all the notes would be there, there's no risk of losing things, you don't have to drive it over to the fire station for a fire to sign off on it.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a lot easier, and the coolest part, in my opinion, is that the inspectors will have tablets, so they will be able to do the inspections, take pictures, document them right there. They will be able to hand the tablet over to the person for them to sign off that the inspection has been completed. If there are any citations, they can issue them right there, they can, everything, real time, getting uploaded to the system.
Good.
Excellent.
Yeah, it sounds interesting. I think it sounds like there's also quite a bit of work to do in terms of converting from one system to the other, and making everybody, bringing everybody up to speed.
This is likely to be a three-year project.
Yeah, but I mean, that's not us to do, that's the Town Manager and you to work through, but I think we'll probably want to make sure that, he's gonna want to make sure, I'm sure that this, all of that's covered in the plans.
We've discussed this.
Yeah.
I didn't want to include this when he wasn't here, but in order to get the process moving, so that we can get the contract signed, just because it has to get referred out, so he is in the loop on this, and approves.
Great. So we refer it?
Sounds good.
Good. Good?
We're getting referrals.
We're referring that to the Finance Committee.
Motion.
Oh, do we need a motion? I'm sorry. I can't just do that? No.
The first time I've had the opportunity to help out, you.
There'll be many more. Motion to refer to committee.
Do you need a second? Second.
Phil, I'm gonna miss you.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor? Do we need to vote on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Next item is, I've included in the package a list of all of the committees that everybody currently is on, and I would like to propose that everybody stay on the committees that they're currently on, as opposed to making changes. I think it helps to have stability and consistency, but if somebody does want to change committees, we can talk about it, maybe something later, but I would like to appoint all of the folks who are on these various committees, reappoint them for the following year. So in Finance, it would be Councillors Delvanto, Luteri, and Boyagen. Rules and Ordinance, it would be Councillors Boncorry, Delvanto, and Verone. Public Health and Safety, Councillors Calla, Boncorry, and Engman. Public Works would be Council Verone, Delvanto, and Boyagen. Economic Development, Councillors Sanford, Luteri, and Engman. Capital Assets, Councillors Sanford, Calla, and Verone. And Appointments, Commissions, and Committees, Council Luteri, Council Boyagen, and Council Engman. So I would...
If I may, regarding Economic Development, Council Engman's been an integral part and very active in it, and she's interested or willing to take on a co-chair position. I'd be happy to have her co-chair with me.
Oh, I'd be honored.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Hope that's appropriate.
That's fine. I think the Charter actually says the first person named is the chair.
Okay.
You want to be the chair?
I'll put it to Russ. Russ is the chair.
I think the Charter, I read the Charter actually says the first person named is supposed to be the chairperson of that committee, so I don't think there's any kind of wording for...
Sometimes it's a thought that counts.
It's a fact, yeah.
But very capable, yes. So keep it as a there right now, and then we'll transition at that point in time. That's okay.
Okay, great.
Counsel Engman?
That's fine.
So do we have a motion to make those appointments kind of en masse? Motion?
So, please.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Sounds good.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. I put into the package a state of the town message, the Council President, under the Charter, submits this each year, so I mean, I would read it if you would like, but you know, I can...
Motion to waive reading?
Motion to waive the reading? I'm happy with that. Yeah.
I don't know if you're gonna get a second on that.
It's up to you. No, you feel free.
I'm planning on letting you all read it, and I can read it right here. That's...
Sure.
No, no, go ahead.
Let me read that, then. Okay, so this is the State of the Town message, put together by me. The Town Council President, Robert Driscoll. "The overall state of the Town of Wintering continued in a very positive direction in calendar year 2016. Indeed, some have suggested that the Town is in a mid-renaissance. The highlights described below are evidence of vision, growth, stability, and increased prosperity that bode well for the future of Wintering. Many factors have contributed to this achievement. Clearly, the Town has benefited from a strong state and national economy, even though this strength might, has not been felt by everyone. Wintering's proximity to the city of Boston has been a significant factor, especially in terms of real estate valuations. But the real driving force behind Wintering's continued improvement is the commitment from every corner of the Town's employees and residents. Among all the departments responsible for carrying out the daily work that is critical to Wintering's success, there exists a very high level of professionalism, competence, and collegiality. Department managers under the leadership of the Town Manager display a true sense of vision and personal responsibility. Among Wintering's residents, or citizens, rather, there is a high level of interest and pride in the community. There is a growing sense throughout the community that we are lucky to reside in a very special community. Dozens of committees and boards exist under the Town Government umbrella, in which hundreds of Wintering residents participate. During 2016, dozens of citizens, many participating for the first time, signed up to volunteer on numerous Town Committees. All these folks, new and old, signed up so that they can bring their knowledge, talents, and skills to bear in the myriad of issues facing the Town. They also make sure that they represent well the very interests of their fellow citizens. The Town would not be in a solid state, is currently in, but in, but for the work and dedication of all these folks. The Wintering Town Council sincerely thanks everyone for making Wintering a wonderful place to live and work, and while there is much more work to accomplish and a myriad of issues to address, we're on a strong and positive path." I list after that, there are two pages of various accomplishments, kind of broken down by topic, really, so there's economic business development, and I could go through these. I mean, the population of the Town has grown by over 400 people since 2010. Home values are up 10%. New growth is up 25%. The Center of Business District Master Plan is in process, has been created in a draft form. The former middle school reuse study is in process. The Wintering Fairly Experienced, a solid first year of operation. The Wintering Golf Course 20-year lease has been negotiated. The Wintering Health Center opened for business. Under Finance, we have a balanced budget for fiscal year 17. We had solid free cash, something like $2.8 million. Various reserve and stabilization funds were funded from that free cash. We got a clean audit report. We had a bond upgrade. We passed a debt exclusion vote on the Miller Field Project. We received a $2.5 million grant from Masport to help facilitate the building of Miller Field. We created, we're in the process of creating the Wintering Foundation, and we applied for a Mas Works grant for the Center of Business District Development, and that's still in process. In Public Safety, we have a solid opioid addiction strategy for that horrible scourge, and Wintering has actually been, is going to be recognized in the spring down in Washington, D.C. for that program. We've implemented the regional dispatch. The Police Department organizational restructuring has been approved. On Education, we have the new school that opened. Student population has grown. Under the Town Administration, the Town Clerk's Office managed four elections I have here, maybe it was five, but three of them were unplanned, I think, so that was a big deal, and I did great work on that. The Town Manager continues to partner with the Harvard Kennedy School of Government. We've got a request for proposal issued for the Wintering Bus Service through the MBTA, and the Town Administrator and all of the folks in Inspection Services created, Town Manager created a new development handbook. It's been created and published. And then, under Infrastructure Improvements, I list all the things that we've completed, some of them were already ongoing before the past year, but Pico Beach, Cottage Hill, Wintering Street, Franklin Street, Miller Fields in process, the Ingleside Park, projects underway, the Lewis Lake Drainage Project, Dog Park Development, Wintering Beach renovation improvements, we'll have Phase 2, I think, Belle Isle Ecology Park and Walkway, that's in process, and I love mentioning the posts around the town, the fences that just make the Town really look neat, and having that around the golf course just really adds a lot. Under Facilities, I list Pauline Street Gym renovations. We have that in process. We have the former middle school modification happening for Parks and Rec. We made some various ordinance changes. We've had two SDODs approved, Bed and Breakfast, Trajet Lodging, permit process approved, we approved a new flood plain. In the Board of Health, there was a regulation change, ordinance changed, phased out Styrofoam food takeout, and there's some restrapped regulations implemented. And as important as anything is that we've created some new committees, that we've gotten And as important as anything is that we've created some new committees, that we've gotten some great volunteers to participate in them, number one, the Economic Development Citizens' Advisory Committee, the Transportation Committee, and we have the Miller Field Building Committee. So, just thinking about this, just saying that, kind of you're such a sense of, so much work that goes on, that so many people contribute to, I mean, we're, we're involved in our law, but so many people in the community do so much work, the employees of the town, guys do awesome work, and so, that's, that's my state of the, state of the town address.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you, I didn't expect to read it, so. Okay, now under Public Comment, any public comments? Say none? We have Public Relations, we have a January fourth, this information meeting for the Center Business District, that's tomorrow night at the Lysing Room over in the EB Newton School. And then, January twenty-eighth is the Chamber of Commerce two thousand seventeen Awards Night over at the Hyatt Riverside, it's a really good event, and I don't know if there are any other events that any of the councils are aware of?
No.
So that, that's it, I think that's, that's the meeting.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Shortest meeting on record?
You may want to update your, your state of the town, that was pretty good.
I know, I was shooting for half an hour, I'm almost there. Motion to adjourn?
Well, before we adjourn, I'd just like to mention one thing, please, the DPW Subcommittee will be having a meeting on the twelfth, seven PM, this room, on the agenda will be the Dog Park.
We also, just need to make sure we advertise for the public hearing on the tennis courts on the seventh, right?
The seventh, we discussed that.
And then we have the tendings.
Where are you going to get them?
So.
On the seventh.
Just to remind.
February seventh.
February seventh, yeah, and that on regular, first, the.
Maybe one other item, we're trying to get a meeting together for the neighbors regarding Paul, the former nursing home, so we're going to try to get that up and running before Monday's Planning Board Meeting. It may be a Saturday morning meeting, but what we'll do is send out flyers to the butters and to the neighborhood, just to give them an update on what's going on over there, and it was suggested by the developers, so I'm going to try to get that done, I'm going to try for a Saturday morning meeting, might be better for the neighbors.
Would it be this Saturday?
Yeah, it should, it would be this Saturday if you could.
This Saturday?
Okay. So we need to advertise, not, I mean, we should just alert people to that.
Where will you be having it?
I'm hoping we can have it at the EB Newton.
EB Newt.
Yeah. Ten o'clock? Yeah, we'll distribute some flyers, I'll make sure they go out.
Okay.
Get the information out on WCAT, maybe through some of the transcript also, we can leave it.
Are there any other meetings coming up?
It's just more, it's like there was one more, one more. What time do you want?
Seven PM, please.
So we have, we have the Center Business Meeting on the fourth.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yep.
And then, there's another one that was on the.
Well, there's.
The tenth Degora, the Master Plan.
That's right, that's right, that's next, Tuesday.
That's tomorrow, it's Tuesday, so the general public knows that.
Yeah, yeah, that's, we're kind of setting that up as a, as a workshop, it's a public meeting, absolutely. But I, I hope it would be like just time for us to talk with the Economic Development Citizens Committee, to go through that large document, there's a lot in there. I don't know if everybody had a chance to look at that, it's a lot in there, I sent some notes to Joe today, I don't know if others had a chance to, but we want to sit down and talk with them about every aspect of that. So I picture it's kind of be a conversation between that committee and the council.
Planning Team has a conference call tomorrow at one thirty to work through some of, you know, edits and amendments, but, and I'll be bringing your notes to that, but anybody else that has comments that they want, want me to share with the Planning Team at this stage, feel free to email them to me, and I'll, I'll include those in our discussion tomorrow.
Yeah, because I think that committee's meeting Thursday night.
He's, he's meeting Thursday night, yeah.
And, and advance a meeting with them, so. Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn?